Check, check. Welcome to today's planning commission meeting. It is 9:00 AM, so I call the meeting to order. And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we give verification of legal notice? Thank you. We do have one item in the consent agenda to approve the minutes from the June 26th, 2025 planning commission meeting.
If we could just make a small change, I did not vote against it last time, I just abstained.
Other than that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I motion to approve the minutes.
A second, approve as amended.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion consent agenda passes, is approved. Next, we move on to public input, citizens', citizens' input. And any person may speak for three minutes about any subject of concern, provided that it is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission and is not already on today's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. Speakers are requested to legibly write your name on the sign-in sheet at the podium and state your first and last name for the record. So citizens' input, I believe we have one person here today. Randy Pleger, if you could just say your first and last name.
Yeah, my name is Randy Pleger. I'd like to give a little introduction to myself first. I'm a Lake County resident. I graduated from Middletown in nineteen seventy-two, my wife did the same in Lakeport. All of my grandkids, all of my kids live in the county. Getting that out of the way, I wanted to make sure that she knew that I was local. My problem is water. I am parked next to a cannabis operation. It's at one-nine-four-three-oh-three Butts Canyon Road. When he got his permit to drill, he drilled in an area that allowed him to siphon all the water off. Basically, that's it, but with that permit, he made the permit in for domestic use, not for commercial use. And I corrected it, this is, this is six-years-old information, by the way. Once the the drill was done, I filed a lawsuit then. And it took me four, four-and-a-half years to settle the lawsuit, and I prevailed. My, my information hasn't been verified through, through your own court system. With the, with the fact that they, they changed, I'm backing up a little bit. The fact that they changed to a, to a commercial pump system, I'd like to see the investigation. Because no one talked to me about them draining water for commercial or anything. I have never been talked to about the water, it was just done. I did complain to the, to the board supervisors, and every time I got a chance, I came to a meeting. Okay, this is an ongoing thing. Basically, you got the facts. I, I am not quite as angry today as I was on, on Tuesday, but if, if, if you want to look at that, it's got, it's got a lot more emotion in it and a lot more anger, but it costs me three hundred dollars a month for water, times twelve months, times five years. That's a lot of money. I do not make a lot of money, I can't afford high-priced lawyers. I defended myself. And that's the only reason I won, because he didn't take me serious. He walked away. He did not want to spend any money on a lawyer for somebody who didn't know what he was talking about. The judge agreed with me. Basically, that's all I have to say, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so it is nine oh-five, so we can move on to our nine oh-five timed item. Public hearing consideration of tentative parcel map PL twenty-five dash sixty-five, PM twenty-four dash oh-two, and sequel categorical exemption C twenty-four dash forty-four to divide one parcel into two parcels located at eight-eight-five-five Red Hills Road in Kelseyville. The APN is zero-one-one dash zero-one-five dash one-five. And we have staff with the staff report?
Good morning, Commissioner, San Pablo Guerrero, Assistant Planner. Today for your consideration is PL twenty-five sixty-five for parcel map twenty-four dash oh-two and CE twenty-four dash forty-four. No development is proposed, the site is off of Highway one-seventy-five in the Cobb Mountain Area Plan. The project description, the parcel size is ten point one-three acres. It's a zone rural residential, special lot size and density combining with the minimum lot size determined as two-point-five acres. And partially within the scenic combining district. The general plan designation is rural residential, supervisory district is five. For the site plan, the project site currently contains two single-family dwellings, a garage, a barn, a shed, a metal shed, two septic systems, and one well. The proposed parcel A, which is five-point-zero-three acres, contains a single-family dwelling, a garage, and a water well. Proposed parcel B, five-point-ten acres, is a single-family dwelling, a barn, and two sheds. For the proposed easement of access with a shared well for both homes, and one proposed easement of access within the shared driveway shown on the parcel map, which is accessible via, via Red Hills Road, which is a county-maintained road. For the project analysis, compliance with the general plan, zoning ordinance, and the local area plan includes goals and policies supported by the parcel map being outside of the community growth boundary. Both parcels have existing individual septic systems and a shared well via an easement, proposed easement. Access is via county-maintained Red Hills Road, the site has a eight percent cross slope, average cross slope. No current development is proposed, so natural resources remain undisturbed. It is in a high-fi area, and it is adjacent to the Cal Fire, Kelsey and Cobb Fire Station. The parcel meets the minimum acre-size requirements. The tenant map aligns with the lake land use and limit goals and policies. The Cobb Mountain Area Plan, the proposed parcel rec map, sorry, the proposed parcel map recognizes the existing development of two separate residential dwellings already functioning independently with, on the property, making a formal division, a logical progression that acknowledges the current use. Subdivision regulations conformity, chapter seventeen, section seventeen-point-three, meeting the requirements of seventeen-point-six through seventeen-point-two-eight of the subdivision regulations, which includes the tentative map requirements, statements, division of land, dedications, lots, easements, roads and streets, parks, and recreation facilities and improvements. The Lake County zoning ordinance, which includes Article eight rural residential district, Article thirty, the B special lot size and density district, and Article thirty-four scenic combining district. No new development is proposed, as both parcels already contain existing dwellings. Both parcels, which includes the five-point-zero-three and the five-point-ten acres, exceed the minimum two-point-five lot size option specified by the B-five destination in Article thirty. A certain portion of the parcel is within the scenic combining district. Since no development is proposed in the area, the review process under Article fifty-six is not applicable. This ensures that compliance with Article thirty-four is met. Additionally, Cal Transit provided no adverse comments regarding this project. The project is in compliance with the Lake County zoning ordinance. Environmental review pursuant to CEQA in the California Code of Regulations, Article nineteen, Section one-five-three-one-five, Class fifteen. An exemption applies to projects when all the following criteria meet. The division results in four fewer parcels. Division is in compliance with the local general plan and zoning regulations. No variances or exceptions are required. All services and access to the proposed parcels are available. The parcels are, was not involved in a division of a larger than, of a larger parcel within the past two years. The parcel does not have an average, average slope greater than twenty percent. Therefore, the parcel map meets all these criteria to be categorically exempted. Parcel map recommendations. Adopt a categorical exemption CE twenty-four forty-four from CEQA under Section one-five-three-one-five, Class fifteen minor land divisions, and approve parcel map PL twenty-five dash twenty-sixty-five, parcel map twenty-four dash oh-two with the proposed conditions of approval and with the findings found in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation for this project, if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you for your presentation, I do have some questions, so once, so I guess both dwellings were permitted, are permitted dwellings on the property?
Yeah, both of the parcels were permitted, I have here, it says, and parcel A was constructed in nineteen eighty-nine, and parcel B was constructed in nineteen eighty-one, and they're both permitted to our system.
Okay, and then I know that they share one well, part of the summary states that each would have access to an individual water well and a separate septic system. I'm assuming the septic, septic systems are already in place for each of the dwellings?
Yes.
And then, and then a future well would be later applied for, for the other property, as currently they share one, is that correct?
The individual septic systems is correct, where they're currently in place and in use for each home, but for the well, they are proposed to use one well for both homes, and there's an easement on the parcel map, so when it's recorded in the deed, it can't be cut off, and it's, it'll be within the deed and easement, but there, there is no proposal for a second well. Just easement for the second parcel to have access for the well.
Okay, thank you.
So, excuse me, just to follow up on that, it says on the tentative map, or the conditions of approval, it says on six, that each parcel shall have its own sewer, water, and PG&E. Does the, does the, the sharing of the well, that suffices that particular requirement?
A small domestic well can be shared with up to four parcels before it goes up to like the next level of, of water regulations.
I was just saying that each parcel should have its own, so I was assuming that meant one well on each parcel. Not necessarily, you can, that means that you could, that would
Well, it is worded as though each one would have its own water source, or its own. Yeah, so we'll, we're gonna reword that one, because it doesn't have sewer, it has onsite wastewater, both septics. So we're gonna correct that, and then any motions to approve this tentative map will be noted as amended.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Six, okay, thank you.
So we will change that to say each parcel shall have its own onsite wastewater, comma. Let's confirm, Pablo, did you say that they intend to share the well, and that was the purpose for the maintenance easement?
Yeah, they intend to use the same well, and that was the purpose of the easement on the parcel.
Then it'll be onsite wastewater treatment and PG&E. Period. And then let's make note in the conditions that the easement is for the sharing of access to the same well, that'll be shared between the two parcels. We'll reword that in some nice wordsmithing way.
I have a related question. You refer to the Cobb Mountain Area Plan, how far north does that extend? Does anyone know?
The Cobb Mountain Area Plan?
Yeah.
Let's take a look, one moment, I'm gonna put the planning area on over. So the Cobb Mountain, it's solidly in the middle, it extends up to Highway twenty-nine as its northern boundary, so, yeah, it's right there. It's, we're not brushing up against Kelseyville or Riviera.
Okay, thanks, just curious.
I have a comment or question, again, in regard to the well, and I believe that Director Turner, you've, you've kind of answered that, but my question had to do with, with parcels in general can have an ADA unit, or, you know, with the split of this parcel, if, if the applicant wanted to put another house on. So as Director Turner just mentioned, that a well can service up to four?
Up to four parcels.
So if these, if either or both of these parcels decided to add an ADU unit, that would be covered also?
Yes, in any zoning district that allows for residential development, you can have your primary residence as well as an ADU and a JADU. So we would rely on environmental health to, when, if they applied for a building permit, to assess the water capacity and the ability for both the well and the septic systems to accommodate additional development.
Okay, thank you. And then I, this here, this question doesn't, this is more of a general question, but in regard to the B-five special lot size, can you explain a little bit about how this parcel ended up as a B-five special lot size?
The designation of the special density overlay kind of predates all of us. Generally, it tends to be an area where you wouldn't normally allow for a two-point-five minimum acre size parcel to exist or to be developed. However, I'm, my, my best theory is it came during the development of either the local area plan or an earlier general plan. And for some reason, that area was designated as where it would be okay. One thing that I didn't note that was missing from our staff report is after a parcel that has a special density overlay such as a B-five is subdivided, that density, that B-five two-point-five acres goes away, and it becomes B-frozen. So that it notes that this has been subdivided and is no longer available for further subdividing.
Okay.
Interesting.
That is normal, that would take a rezone to change that overlay, so what we're planning on doing is adding this project to the county-wide update of the zoning map that's gonna take place after the general plan map has been updated as part of Lake County twenty-fifty. So, because we plan on having it just be a county-led rezone, rather than requiring the property owner to pay for a rezone just for the B-frozen, we're just gonna add that into our county project. But it won't take place until twenty-twenty-seven, so we're making notes on the, the parcel in our electronic permitting system, so it'll pop up should anybody apply for a further subdivision, we'll, we'll let them know that that is actually a B-frozen, yeah.
Okay, and then my final, my final question is, just to ask, why is this project before the planning commission? Because it seems pretty simple and straightforward, just wondering why it couldn't be handled administratively?
According to our zoning code, the land use authority is, is before the planning commission for approval of a tentative map. That just sort of is like a, a draft, it's a draft map that has a lifetime during which the property owner has to satisfy the conditions that are in there that are deemed prior to recordation. Then they reapply for a final map, and that is when they're working with the board of supervisors for final approval. But the board, of course, delegates a responsibility for recommendations on, on matters regarding land use to the planning commission. That's why this is, even the simple project is before you today.
Any more questions from the commission? I believe we have to open this up for public input, so I'll open up public input for this item. If anybody in the chambers wishes to speak, if not, we'll take a look in the Zoom room. All right, I see nobody in the chambers or in the Zoom room, so we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Before we take action, I, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive a, one green sheet from the public from Annette Hig, Hig Day?
I don't think it's my district, but I'll go ahead and make the motion. I move the planning commission find the tentative parcel map PL twenty-five sixty-five, PM twenty-four oh-two is before, is categorically exempt from CEQA. Approving CE twenty-four twenty-four in accordance with CEQA guidelines, Section one-five-three-one-five, Class fifteen minor land divisions, with the findings listed in the with the findings listed in the staff report dated July 10, 2025.
I'll second that with the caveat of the rewrite of-
That would be as amended.
And your mic too. I think your mic's off. If you wanna try it again.
I second the motion with the caveat of the amended statements from number six on the conditions of approval.
Okay, we got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None, and the motion passes. There's a second motion? There's, there's two motions for the item.
I'm trying to get Sharon to do it.
What, make the-
Yeah, we did the categorical exemption, now we gotta do the parcel map.
Oh, I see. Thank you. Okay, so it's the parcel map PL 2565, PM 2402. I move that the Planning Commission find the tentative map, parcel map, PL 2565, PM 2402, as applied for by Stephen Mitten on the property located at 8855 Red Hills Road, Kelceville, California, 95451, APM 01101515, is in conformance with the provisions of the Submap, Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 17 of the Lake County Code, and the Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and upon the basis of approval, said map subject to the conditions with the findings listed in the staff report, July 10, 2025.
Second.
Does that one have to be as amended as well? The motion has to say, and as amended.
As amended.
Second, as amended.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Yeah, that was a long one. The applicant or any interested person is reminded that the subdivision ordinance provides for a 15 calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the planning commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate form and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the 15th calendar day, following the commission's final determination. Alright. And moving on to our non-timed, non-timed items. Thank you Pablo, for your staff report. No non-timed items, any department update?
Yes, I have a few updates for you. First, the Housing Action and Implementation Plan, which I think I might have mentioned here offhandedly a few times. It's going at the same time as our Lake County 2050, but it's not actually part of the Lake County 2050. That plan is in draft form and will go before the Board of Supervisors in a special workshop on July 29. The information gleaned and the actions and implementations that are part of that plan will serve to directly inform the housing element when we start working on that, which is part of the general plan. But this Housing Action and Implementation Plan purpose is mainly to give direction to our, our new housing division, which is only one person right now, in the administrative office, and sort of give marching orders and prioritization towards securing funding sources, taking action to encourage housing development in Lake County, which you all don't need me to tell you we sorely need. So that's gonna be a special meeting on July 29 before the board. If the Planning Commission would like an update, our Deputy County Administrative Officer in Housing would be happy to come at a later Planning Commission meeting and give an update to the commission. Good, I see nods, excellent. I will let her know we are very interested. I wanted to congratulate our Assistant Planner Max Stockton, who yesterday was promoted to Associate Planner. It was a well-deserved promotion. I rely on Max because he is always questioning everything. And a lot of his questions are great. We end up having really good conversations and sometimes he even like modifies the way I'm thinking. So it's, it's, he's just an awesome member of our team. Very thorough, very smart, and really good with the public. So I am very confident that he will make as great an associate planner as he has an assistant planner. And then for our one team member who likes to do musical chairs as far as jobs go, Michelle has accepted the position from Resource Planner to now Senior Planner. So this is a more accurate capturing of her abilities and experience, and we'll be able to continue to use her as an expert for Sequa. Definitely instrumental still in our resource planning as we post for a replacement Resource Planner. And her mentoring to our, our staff is also always an integral part of our team's efficiency. So congratulations on that one too. Then I just wanted to cover a few of the points that the board had as far as input in the cannabis summary that was presented to them this past Tuesday. Feedback, let's see. They did talk about the homeschool. They went over everything that the Planning Commission went over, as well as bullet points of the Planning Commission's recommendations. And their input was as follows. They're, they're, they do not support adding homeschool specifically to the exclusion zone because it's, it's too problematic to track or to know where homeschools are. But they are open in lieu of that to increasing the setbacks for offsite residences. The discussion was somewhere between 500 to 1,000. So that, that will be reflected in the draft. There was interest in moving indoor and mixed light cultivation to service commercial and light industrial zoning districts, rather than having them out in rural lands and rural residential. That is because they noted that these would be structures that would be electrical, electric structures, rather than the outdoor cultivation, which is what we see mostly out in the rural residential and rural lands. They want, they, there is very strong support, just like with the Planning Commission, regarding improving our hydrology reports. Not so much the technical side, because, you know, they seem to have that part down, but rather the interpretive side, where it will be easily digested by staff, commission, and public, as well as really answering the questions that we really care about, which is how much water is this gonna use? How much water do we have? And what are gonna be the impacts in your parcel and neighboring parcels? So, we're gonna work on that. Additionally, there is an article in the zoning code that gives us, Community Development or the Planning Division, the authority to require any reports that we deem necessary. The board's a little queasy with that in that it could vary from director to director, what reports the, the planners are able to, to request. So they would like us to see it codified that use permits or discretionary permit applications that are requiring or proposing groundwater or surface water mandatory hydrology reports. So we'll do that. More preservation or stronger preservation of our scenic corridors. So that could result in some kind of modification of the scenic combining district. We're gonna play around with that a little bit, but the example that they gave is, is a cannabis permit of outdoor cultivation on Highway 53 that looks kind of like blight when it's not, you know, healthy and growing. That disturbs them. They want us to remove the 10-year permit lifetime, which would then make this permit more like every other single-use permit in that it extends, it operates for the life of the business activity. Wouldn't take away from any of our annual compliance monitoring reviews or, or, you know, any, any of the oversight that our department is already doing. They are open to options of modifying the Notice of Applicability Date deadline that has served to kind of cap the number of total permit applications our department would receive. They're open to taking a look at changing that, but they don't want to talk about it. They didn't want to talk about it much on Tuesday. Rather, want to see the changes in the new ordinance and then think about it. Definitely repeated their support for property owner background checks and a suspension in the processing of a cannabis permit should there be warrants issued for, for disqualifying types of offenses. So that is, that was something that came from the board that while we're processing an application, when we're looking for background checks, we're also going to request a search through the sheriff's records to see if there are any active warrants for property owners or applicants. And if there are, we'll set that application aside until that matter, that law enforcement matter has been concluded. They want clarification that the setbacks from public land is limited to developed public land. They are comfortable with the $5,000 bond. They want us to look at maximum acreage of canopy, rather than where it is currently unlimited so long as you have enough accumulated total property. They're looking at encouraging and protecting smaller niche cannabis farmers, similar to our smaller ag and all of our conventional ag. We're specialty markets in Lake County, and they'd like to see us not become a rival for Santa Barbara. Additionally, take a look at any other mitigations that are, that are available for odor impacts. And then this last one was to consider possibly implementing a hearing officer or a hearing board for appeals of Planning Commission decisions on cannabis. We'll take a look at that. I might have missed one or two things. We were, all three of us were scribbling very quickly as they were giving us the impact, but that is what I captured. Yes, the hearing officer. They recognize that lately there are pretty consistent appeals on any approval of cannabis permits by the Planning Commission. They are, so they were, they wanted us to take a look at possibly having a hearing officer, so it would not go to the board. It would go before a hearing officer first. And that decision would be made then. That's all I got. I have to do more research on that one, so I can really flesh it out.
Well, if I recall, because I did hear snippets of the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, that that also had to do with, with trying to expedite the, the appeal hearings so that, because it's hard to get things on the Board of Supervisors' calendar.
Indeed, yeah.
I have a question. The man who spoke earlier regarding the Butts Canyon Road water issue, is there something going on about that? Is, can they make a request for an investigation?
We're already looking into that on the staff level, yeah.
Thank you.
So I had a question on, on the bond. We had asked to increase it beyond $5,000, I think?
The recommendation that I, that I received from the Planning Commission was consider up to $50,000, but actually just take a look at what is reasonable or what is possible. And the board said they're, they're comfortable with the $5,000.
And I have another question if, that's off topic, off this topic if we're finished. I've had a number of questions from the public about zoning administrator hearings. Can you just maybe explain what, what defines zoning administration?
Sure.
Rather, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to. There are different levels of permits available. Some of them are like over-the-counter permits or ministerial building permits. But when you get into planning, there are ministerial planning permits, which could be zoning permits, which is where if you fill, if you fulfill all the criteria, we can go ahead and issue you like a zoning permit for a special event. Then the next level up is your minor use permits. Those are anticipated to have some impact in the environment, but not to the level of what would require a major use permit. So our minor use permits are handled at a zoning administrator level. We still have a noticed public, well, we still have a public hearing notice about the project with the same notification radius as dictated by state law that we use for our major use permits. And then, but the difference with a zoning administrator hearing is that we do not automatically hold a zoning administrator hearing. We do hold one if there is a request submitted within writing. I think it's up to like five days prior to when it would be held. And so sometimes, we don't need to have any of these hearings because nobody requests a hearing. And then that project is approved after the, the seven-day appeal period. So, but a zoning administrator is, that's me, or my designee. We, when we do hold the hearings, we usually hold them up in Conference Room C. They are held in hybrid style, similar to the Planning Commission. There is a staff report, a planner, and, and, and members of the public are welcome to attend and have their input. And we go through pretty much the same process that we do here in the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. And just one more question. The way the public learns about these is because neighbors are notified?
We do the same notification process, so that is, we put it in the paper. We notify, if the project site is under three acres, we notify 300-foot radius. Sometimes we do 350, but I think 300 is the law. And then if the project is more, no wait, it's five acres, huh, Michelle? Is the cutoff. If it's over five acres, then we go out to a 700-foot radius. So we notify those people by mail, we place it in the paper. We always send it to Lake County News too, so the digital paper has it as well.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So I had another comment, question about, back to the discussion of cannabis. A wonderment about just the, the overall financial situation around that. We get X number of dollars in for permits, I assume, okay? And so what is the, the cost to the county for the administration of this particular-
Cannabis fees are a little different than other use permit fees. What is not different is that the fees, as we have in our master fee schedule, have to be directly tied to the expense of processing that permit. And so the permit fees cover, usually, cover the time and effort and expense that it, that it takes for us to process that permit. Then cannabis, where it differs from other use permits, is they have the cannabis tax. That was a measure passed by the voters, and it's on cultivation, and I think they implemented the other ones too later when I wasn't around. I wasn't paying attention. But I think we have the tax also on the other types of cannabis-related businesses. And that tax, it comes into a fund that is then used for a variety of purposes. You can find a much better detailed explanation of it in the budget hearings, but I could tell you that a chunk of it goes off the top for discretionary permits for each supervisory district, or discretionary projects. And I don't mean the same as like our use permit stuff. I mean, at the discretion of the supervisor. They get to have their own projects in their districts and spend an allotted amount of money that comes in from tax, cannabis taxes. Then it also gets distributed to education, I think law enforcement, and like, I am seeing like three other things in this chart, this flowchart in my head that was on the screen. But it gets allotted into other subjects or other budget areas.
So it, so is it a zero base? As far as, does it cost the county more than it brings in? To administer the, the whole, the whole project?
I'm gonna set aside law enforcement, because I'm not able to speak to that. But we have ongoing fees for our annual site monitoring visits. So typically, our expenses are captured. It's also important to recognize that our master fee schedule does note that these fees are a cost-recovery basis. And so now that we have our electronic permitting system, the new one, we are doing a much better job at tracking the amount of time that it takes, so that we can make sure that if it takes more than what they paid in as a fee, which we now consider as like a deposit, we're charging and capturing those expenses. That's from the planning side. I can't speak to the treasurer tax collector for the management or the getting, the securing of the tax payments, nor can I speak to law enforcement.
I think this is an issue that needs discussion, but probably not at our level, because I'm just thinking about the problems we face here, like the infrastructure that the county needs to, you know, invest in to support these businesses. That's, we should, as a county, be doing some, an analysis of that.
I'm not aware of any infrastructure that the county supports for these businesses.
Well, I'm saying that, I guess a couple meetings ago, we had a project.
And I can tell Nicole's about to click her microphone on because we're getting off the topic.
All right, I would just request that we discuss this in some appropriate formal way, at some point.
I wasn't looking for us to take on any of this. I was just, it was a wonderment in just sort of a global, how does it work? How's it going? You know, are we taking in $100,000, but we spend $200,000 to administer, you know, whatever needs to be done? Just wondering, you know, on that, you know, in and out level.
Yeah, your commission would not be the body that that item would be brought to, or that discussion would be had. Generally speaking, for CDD's activities, there is an analysis done by the Board at the time that the master fee schedule is determined, and I haven't seen it in a while, but I suspect that what happens is each department does do its analysis and provides that information as far as costs to process these certain, these permits and the active, and to engage in the activities that they do for the public, and then those costs are translated into fees. There has to be, under the law, a connection between the cost to the department or the cost to the county and the fee itself. So it would not be that we, that fees could be used to collect for infrastructure, for example. It would simply be that CDD's fees would, generally speaking, be tied to CDD's activities. And if there is a shortfall there, presumably the department who sees that shortfall would bring it up to the Board at some point, either at another master fee schedule decision or make a recommendation sooner to say, you know, it turns out that these costs have gone up, and here's our recommendation on how to amend the fees. And then there's an entire process where the, and a hearing, and the public can come and comment and participate, but that would not be before your commission.
Oh, yeah, I knew that. It was just a general wonderment of.
Yeah, the administrative office leads the update of master fee schedule on an annual basis, and that's when, prior to that, we're working with their timeline to make sure that the fees are still reflective of our overall costs. We're really excited about the Open Gov, though, because it will enable us to present much more granular and accurate data of the time that it is taking for the fees than we've been able to capture before. Though it, yeah, I could go on.
All right, thank you.
I just had one question about the 10-year permit versus life of the project. So does that mean that if they want to stay here for 10, 15, or 20 years, as long as the project is continuing to be in compliance and to do their monitoring and everything like that, is that kind of where that one's going to?
It would remove their requirement to apply for a new use permit after the 10 years. It kind of simplifies it in that it makes it just like every other use permit. We, as planners, we appreciate that.
And then also, for example, if the project doesn't last the 10 years, then you get it out of the way?
Yes, thank you. So the Board was also supportive of us looking for a voluntary withdrawal or expiration or termination of a permit outside of our normal revocation process. That would enable the perma-te to say, I don't want to do this anymore, shut down my permit, because otherwise that permit would continue to be active for two years of non-use before it expires.
It seems to me that even a small incentive might prompt that, help clean up the paperwork.
A question along those lines that other permits, as again in that Board of Supervisors meeting, I believe you stated, as we, as I believe we know, is that permits go with the land. So with other permits also, how is, do we have a method at this point for other permits to stop their permit on their site?
We currently do not have any mechanism in the zoning code that would allow for a voluntary termination of a use permit. Just not outside of expiration. So we'll be working closely with County Council on how that exactly works.
Yes, so normally with use permits, because these are not licenses, licenses are attached to the individuals, there are ownership interests and that sort of thing related to that, and it follows the individual, where use permits attach to the land, as you've heard repeatedly, which, unless there is a built-in expiration into that specific permit when it's issued, which happens, there are some that have a life expectancy, and after a certain amount of time, they expire at that date unless there is a timely renewal request. They run with the land unless and until the use they allow ceases to occur for at least two years. So if a person, for example, say there was not a 10-year built-in expiration date to a specific permit, like a cannabis use permit, if there is a built-in 10-year permit, then at 10 years from the issuance or the active date of that permit, the permit will cease to exist. The use will no longer be allowed unless there is a timely continuance, request for continuance and approval. If there is not a 10-year built-in timeframe, then what happens is that our, that generally speaking, the zoning ordinance allows for that permit to go for as long as that permit use is active, plus two years. So in other words, the use that the permit allows would have to be active, and then once it becomes inactive, two years from that date, the permit expires on its own. And the reason that's important is because then if you have changes in rules and things like that, a person couldn't come back and then revitalize a use permit and say that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use and therefore should be allowed. The county can then apply the new rules for that use if it's reapplied for.
I was just going to add that that's all regulated in Article 60 of our zoning ordinance, too, if you want to read the language at all. I'm happy to send it as well.
Thank you. I would just like to say that as a new planning commissioner, I really enjoy this update section. You articulate very well, so both of you, and staff as well, so, and help to keep us informed, as well as any of the public that's joining us. Thank you.
I concur.
With that being said, well, first, congratulations, Michelle, and to Max for their new positions. But other than that, I call during the meeting at 9:49 AM.